Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's September 13th Equity and Student Committee, excuse me, Equity and Student Achievement Committee of the whole. This evening, I'm going to ask to call this meeting to order. And with the acceptance of the minutes from our August 9th Equity and Student Achievement Committee of the whole.
Motion.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor of accepting the minutes from August 9th?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, those meeting minutes are accepted. Before we move forward, at this time, I just wanted to just briefly shout out and acknowledge Mr. Dejean Washington, who is a graduate of Edison Technical High School. It is his one-year anniversary and I love with the City School District. And I'd love to see full circle stories to see our graduates and our, as we know, alumni just doing well and giving back. So thank you, Mr. Washington.
We should have had cake.
We will have cake.
I didn't know that.
Yes. So at this time, since we are not scheduled for an audit committee meeting until October, normally those meetings don't happen monthly. So the next audit committee meeting is not until October. And our graduation audit is directly related to student achievement. We're going to present the results of that graduation audit this evening in the ESA meeting timeframe. So I'd like to, at this time, turn the meeting over to Commissioner Patterson, who's over the Audit Committee, who will take the meeting further.
Just a minute, please. Okay, I guess we're at discussion four for discussion topics. Since we are not scheduled for an audit committee meeting until October and the graduation audit is directly related to student achievement, we are representing the results in this ESA meeting. Let's see here. I'm going to turn the meeting over to actually the Auditor General. And she can take it from there.
Okay. Thank you. We have a presentation for this evening. And while they're getting that ready, I just wanted to let you know that the actual audit report and presentation is not going to be publicly released until General Counsel has released those documents to identify if any details require redact, any redaction, et cetera. So I just wanted to make sure that those documents are not ready. But as soon as that review is complete, those would be posted. Okay, so first of all, let me just step back. And the graduation audit took place as a result of a number of questions that came from the Board of Education relating to our graduation data. With that, the superintendent at the time, which was Dr. Meyer Small, had requested that we consider including that work within the scope of our 22 audit plan. That was a large project included in our plan. It was approved and adopted by the board. And so I just want to make sure that is the reason why this body of work did take place as a significant project for the district. To ensure everyone has a general understanding, students are required to have a minimum of 22 credits to obtain the high school diploma. And the requirements do identify certain disciplines that those particular credits should be. There are also specific Regents exam requirements with a few alternate pathways that are available. And while there are numerous pathways, we don't really want to touch on all of those pathways. But we did evaluate as it related to reviewing student records and information to make sure that there was compliance with the SED requirements. For the graduation requirements, a student is placed in a cohort. And I just want to provide a little bit of background information in case other, some do not know and understand. So once a student enters the ninth grade, that is usually when they're entering into a cohort and that'll be their cohort year for their school. There are specific circumstances where you can remove a student from a cohort, such as maybe a student is transferred out or goes to another country or is deceased, anything like that. But generally speaking, that's where the cohort is coming from. The graduation rate then is calculated based on the number of students who graduate, divided by the number of students who entered into that ninth grade cohort four years earlier. For purposes of this audit, the graduation rates for the district were 63, 68, and 64% for the cohorts of 2015, 16, and 17 respectively. So I just want to make sure that will be the data. So when you start translating the cohort to the graduation year, our cohort 2015 would be their 2019 graduates. Our 2016 cohort is our 2020 and our 2017 cohorts being 2021. So I just want to let you know what the scope of that work was. So we really set out to really have a historical view of the graduation rates. I know that there appear to be some real questions about kind of the increases in different schools or certain buildings that didn't happen and kind of the results that were with the graduation rates that were presented. So for that reason, we really looked at pre and post pandemic students' grades as well as looking at policies, procedures, credit requirements, Regents requirements, et cetera. Our approach was to pull the graduation data from the New York State database. We, of course, used the Office of Accountability. They were very helpful in that. We obtained individual student records from our Power School Student Management System. We did test eight secondary buildings as well as visited six. Of course, there was also general data analysis that was performed across all schools. And we really obtained then from the various operational areas, operating protocols and procedures that would have been in place or will be formally documented. And in the case that they were not documented, then we would have inquired of the various schools or individuals who were doing that body of work. Slide. So this might be a little, depends upon where you're viewing, but this is the graduation rate table that existed there. It does identify what was reported as far as the number of students, the enrollments, and the rates that are there. So I just put that as there for informational purposes. This is just a simple graph to identify that same data. But I do want to bring to your attention during the three-year period for our audit work, Vanguard and IAT were no longer there. That's the reason why they're showing up in the darker color. So they would not have been available for all of those years because they did close. So a summary of the key areas that we touched upon would be policies, regulations, protocols, and procedures, our RCSD course catalog, Power School Student Management System, our grade point average and grading policies, graduation requirements, our COVID impact, and our cohort tracking. As I go through the various next grouping of slides, it'll align with the information that was available in the audit report. And I'll try to reference then the recommendations as they come through. If there is a pressing question, please feel free to bring it to my attention. Under policies, regulations, and procedures, that would be recommendations 1, 2, and 27, we really felt like appropriate governance through basically formal written communication didn't exist for all graduation-related data. Now, we fully understand the state does set the minimum standard that we have. Our interest here and our concern is to make sure that as the district has differences, whether that be across schools or, you know, across any type of district-wide beliefs, we want to ensure that that is formally written and clear to everyone. When we looked, we really want to see the grading standards. It shouldn't be a surprise what our grading standards are and the scales that we use. When we have cohort tracking and parent communication standards, we all know how important it is to ensure families are aware and help the students to stay on track. So we want to make sure we have standards for that. Ceremony participation periodically comes into play when there becomes a question about when a student or family wants to walk. And, you know, what is the criteria? And I know that that has come up as it related to suspension in this past year. In addition, with general education and grading information systems, we want to ensure that we are clear about how things will work. There's also, it was interesting that we kind of came upon or tripped upon our Managed Choice Policy for student transfer practices. While it wasn't with great intent and we know that that is being addressed or looked into by the policy committee, one of the items that came about was allowing 11th and 12th graders to transfer. And it came up as we visited schools because there were concerns, whereas a building might have tracked a student from ninth grade and they're anticipating, you know, what their needs will be by 12th grade. And if they get a student in their 12th grade year and that student is overaged and undercredited or that student is behind, then that directly impacts their graduation performance and their graduation rate. So that was a real concern and that is the reason why that policy is included here. The specific recommendations, of course, then, we were just looking for consideration and they're not all for policies. Remember, we want to note that this is policies, regulations, and/or procedures that can be identified. So the board may decide at a policy or governance level, certain policies should exist. But in those cases where the board does not establish a policy, the superintendent can decide to identify a regulation or have operating protocols and procedures to govern those areas. But we did want to make sure that the key graduation-related items are there. One thing we noticed is as we look on our website, unless you specifically go to school without walls to determine what that model is, it's different than what the other models are. So would it make sense for some governing summary being some sort of policy or some guidance to identify what that model is and why that or how that is different than the other models? The Academic Standards and Assessment Procedures is kind of a comprehensive book with all assessment and grading-related activities. It is something that, when I first got here many years ago, that was readily and frequently used. And it appears that book has not been updated since 2012. And so the challenge behind that, we obviously looked for it because I was aware of it and knew to ask for it. But when you look at newer people who are here, it was not really known and understood that this document existed. And since it hadn't been updated, it became less clear as to exactly what other item we would have or what other document we'd have that would encompass all of those various policies. With the current leadership team, this was done. And some of the challenges in that particular book, the current leadership team has been offering guidance in specific areas that they are improving and working on. However, there is not one big comprehensive procedure that really deals with our standards and assessments. In this particular case with academic standards and assessment procedures, and we call that ASAP, you know, there was an attempt in 2015 to rewrite. We did see the version with the various edits that might have been suggested, but that was never adopted. But another thing we noted about the version we were able to see, of course, they're still referencing Common Core standards and we're on Next Gen. So there's a lot of work that needs to be, to take place as it relates to really what does need to be documented in that booklet. It may not be what the current leadership team wants. And as long as they decide the ASAP manual have certain items, as long as it's formally documented, these other items that are important, then that would be fine. But we just are looking for some comprehensive standards across the district so that everyone has a level playing field. Also included in the regulations and procedures is we're looking for historical written standards. So through the scope, we looked over the course of three different academic periods. And we actually had to rely on, fortunate for me, our team has been here about 14 years on average. So we'd say, oh, this person was in that area back in 20 such and such, and would go and see someone and ask a question to try to get to how something was working in a student's record. For example, it could be a particular course that was a substitution in a particular year, which we didn't carry on in other years. And so we really do need to have a centralized repository that says for cohort such and such, 2017, these are the standards that were in place and be able to make sure that we have a clear account of our historical practices. So it isn't unclear when we're looking at data to answer questions of why something is a certain way. We also are looking for clearly defined roles and responsibilities across the organization. So when you looked at what does the school chiefs do? Is that consistent across all school chiefs? What is the principal's role or the counselor's role as we look at some of the cohort tracking, et cetera? Where does accountability's responsibility start and stop? Sometimes it just makes greater clarity when you're developing clear policies and procedures and it's clear who's responsible for what. Then there's less of an opportunity for someone to be missing the mark because it's clearly documented and there's no confusion about who's doing what. The next item is the RCSD course catalog. And I should just put the Jallow item on here because that is her official statement of the year, I think, about the desire for a course catalog. It's recommendations six and seven. And so we did obtain the course catalog that does exist. And we identified that there were courses taken by students that are not in the course catalog. We didn't see consistency with prerequisites as they were written. And then as we turn and we look at the course catalog, if the course catalog is correct and complete, someone has to enter all of that content into the Power School Student Management System accurately to ensure that the intent of the course catalog is actually executed in the system. We did see some errors or irregularities in Power School and some of the information was incomplete. So as we were looking, we saw things like inaccurate catalog descriptions, where you might have a science class, but the description was a global history class or an English class and the description was science. So we just needed to make sure it could have happened in the conversion. It's not clear where the problem might have taken place. But at the end of the day, we need an accurate, comprehensive, complete course catalog. And those things then need to be entered accurately and completely into our student management system. Moving into the Power School Data Integrity, which would be recommendations eight through 12, we saw a number of data integrity-type challenges in the system as it related. And, you know, one of the issues is to ensure, the good news is we have a process for grade and credit changes, but we didn't consistently comply with that process. And so the good news is all we have to do is do a reinforcement, a retraining, and a monitoring to deal with that particular issue. We did see data input errors. And the real challenge about that is that's really a school-based error. And we really need to implement better procedures to ensure that once data entry into a student record takes place at the school, someone is reviewing, certifying, and even signing off. I've reviewed this record, it's complete, it's accurate, and they're ready to move on. So that's something we need at the school level. There were key reports that all data from certain students didn't show up. So if we ran a historical report and we were expecting to see all grades, and then some grades were missing. So we want to make sure that when we look at the integrity of data, that reports are configured and our expected results are complete and accurate. We recognize the system didn't always have audit history in it, but audit history was not available until September of 2020. So that would suggest that we couldn't really look at historical changes in the system and determine who did what where because that wasn't functionality. That is something pretty important and critical as we look at system conversions and implementations that we really must consider what is the audit history available to us because once someone does something, you have no idea what happened and you really can't trace back where or how bad a certain problem is. One, another thing that we're believing is that as you're looking and you're doing data entry in a system, it makes sense to kind of have those little friendly reminders where if a field is looking for a number and you put in a letter, something should let you know, hey, no, that's not quite it. And so when we use system logic and little, you know, reminders or reports to tell us that we're missing the mark, that's extremely helpful. We saw different instances like a student who had an F grade in Power School in a period when they weren't supposed to receive an F. They were actually supposed to receive an incomplete at the time. That was an inconsistency we noted in the data integrity. We really did see some places where historical grades, when we were trying to pull student records. And if I just step back for a minute, so the level of review we had to go through to do this work is if we took one student, we had to look at every class and individual grade provided to that student over their entire career from ninth grade to 12th grade. So it was quite a bit of data and it did take quite a bit of time because we would then have to say, okay, does this make sense? We've got these four marking periods, this final grade is okay. Let's see how those things average. Is it the right credit? Is it the right number of points? Did it translate in the system accurately? So one thing we did find as we were going through that level of detail, which probably isn't normal for people to do, we really were missing some summer school grades. And what had happened was we accidentally configured the system and didn't identify that the grade 13 or summer school should be included when we run a historical report. So when the numbers didn't come out right and we're saying, this is not what I'm expecting to see when we look at the result, we then figured out, working with the IT team, that, oh, there was a configuration issue. That box had to be checked. While it was corrected, then, when those grades did show up, it's slightly tweaked than GPAs because now you're including additional grades in there. So those are the types of data integrity items that we identified that we really felt we have to get cleared up in the system. So we really want to make sure that we've got solid documentation, that we look at all reports that we're using in the system and we're making sure that there's accuracy and completeness in those reports, that key calculations in the system are verified for accuracy. There was a report called a GPA verification report. We were trying to validate GPAs. And when we ran the report, we actually had to pick a title weighted to get the unweighted value. And it was just a little odd thing and it's a simple, you know, configuration switch item. But it was kind of an interesting thing and we wouldn't have caught it unless we were trying to recalculate the numbers. Moving into GPA testing. At a high level, just wanted to give you an idea of some of the work that we did. We wanted to assess basically the GPA calculation. And we calculated the unweighted and weighted GPA for 42 different students. And 10 were random. Then another 30 were just 12th grade students that were selected from some schools that we had visited. And then we had a couple because they looked kind of strange. Like when we looked at an unweighted GPA that was more than 4.5. Well, if the maximum's 4.5 and their unweighted scale was above that, we thought, why not? We decided we would look at that because something wasn't quite right. We decided we would look at that because something wasn't quite right. But this would be an example of a system setting that it should tell you when you put a value in there, or if the value exceeds the maximum, that's a real good indicator that you made a little oopsie. So that's the type of thing we're really hoping takes place. We also calculated the potential if the past and past with distinction grades given during the 2019-20 COVID period were included in some of the GPAs. That was just done as an aside because we were curious. Looking at grade point average and added value with recommendations 13 and 14, I'll take a pause first of all. Are there any specific questions so far?
It's okay.
Good, I'll keep going.
I'd like to have you, Auditor General, to explain what is, and this is for our viewing audience as well, what is meant by weighted versus unweighted?
Okay. So as I'm getting into this, I actually will have a slide that I think is going to help that.
Okay.
But generally speaking, when you have a course or you have a grade, the intent is, there are times where we want to give a student additional credit or value for taking a harder or more rigorous course. And so we do have that as an availability. Some places really concern about weighted and unweighted. Some schools can decide that they're not going to wait classes, and that's a management decision to say, for example, say I was just taking a regular math class, and at the end of the day, if I get a regular math class and I get an A in that class, I would get, say, a 4.0 towards my GPA if that was the only class I had to take. But say I took an AP math class. If you felt an AP math class was worth more than the 4.0 and you wanted to give me an extra point value towards my GPA for taking a harder class, then that A is equivalent to a 5.0 instead of a 4.0, if that makes some sense. Does that kind of help?
Yeah, it does in terms of explaining it, and I have other questions about that later.
Okay, so let me get into this one, and then I'll pause because I think there will be some grading-related questions here, I've seen based on things that I've heard. So, looking at grade point average and added value for recommendations 13 and 14, our unweighted scale actually goes from a zero to a 4.5, whereas more commonly used was a four-point scale, or even possibly an actual numeric to record the average. Added value, or additional weight, is provided to that scale for students taking Regents, honors, advanced placement classes. That's in our current environment. Regents classes were receiving additional value. My struggle with that as a decision was, students are expected to take Regents classes, so why are you getting credit for doing something that you already should be doing? So that was a little bit concerning, that there was added value given to Regents courses. Now, if we step back, there's a perfectly, well, somewhat logical reason. If the guidance that we have as our ASAP manual or our operating practices have historically, were written back in 2012, at that time, or maybe when they first were originated, Regents courses wasn't the standard. And because we haven't changed it in all these years and nothing's been updated, we've maintained that extra value for Regents classes when in the current environment, it just doesn't make sense. However, we also noted classes like art, music, drama, PE, and theater tech courses, coded as Regents classes, which is something that may not actually be correct, and they were given added value as well. So we really need to make sure that when we go through our course catalog... Do you have a question, Dr. Jalloh? Okay. So when we go through our course catalog and we identify courses and value and the level of the course, we need to make sure there's a certain amount of independence and that we're really clear that if we're going to call it a Regents classes, it would be a state-adopted Regents-level class, and it wouldn't be other things that we think are worthy of extra points. And we probably need to make sure that it is system-wide, how we weigh our classes versus building-specific. So based upon all the practices, it does make the GPA somewhat inflated in this particular environment, but it was consistently applied because this is the way it is in our system. So even if it wasn't intentional, this is how we configured our current system, and this is how things are going. So if you're looking at this slide, it kind of shows you our grade point scale that we're currently using. And so with a non-Regents class, if you're looking for overall GPA, then if you took all non-Regents classes, your GPA could never be higher than a 4.5. More realistically, our students are going to take a blend of classes because all students are generally required to take some Regents classes. So those are going to be bumping up the GPA because we have an additional point for everything someone's doing. And if you are so fortunate to be in one of the honors classes or your AP classes, then you're going to get a whole bump of two points, and then you'll be in even better shape as it relates to your GPA. So if you really look... Excuse me. So if you really looked at this, I mean, on the scale... Excuse me. Your C+ obviously would have two more points if you were in an honors class versus one that would be in a non-Regents class. Slide? So generally for the recommendations, we really want to adopt a plan to really adjust our scale, and it's really the unweighted scale because the extra .5 kind of throws things off a little bit. It was actually adopted within our scale to allow for a 100, or from a 95 to 100 average, it's considered a 4.5 instead of a regular 4.0, which is a little more commonly understood. We also want to ensure that school profiles are updated so that as we make changes to grades, the profile goes with the transcript and for the student's record, and it makes it clear how to read that transcript. So we want to make sure we remember, and we're thinking holistically as a system, everyone needs to know, we need to make sure this happens, so there'll be clarity for those. And we want to ensure EAST is included because they use our systems, so we want to make sure they're brought in for the planning, communication, et cetera, as these changes take place. We definitely want to discontinue the practice promptly about, as it relates to the Regents getting additional value, because that doesn't really make clarity there, as well as ensuring our course catalog and our system reflects these changes. Is there a question on that?
Yeah, I think you just touched on it because I wanted to know how expeditiously we would be eliminating that practice, because looking at that, it just, it breaks my heart and I just have to be honest about it. When we look historically at this district, this is actually nothing new. It's really just telling us the truth, and so I appreciate the work that's going into this. But the story, if I was to add a narrative to this, looking at the GPA scale, we're setting students up for not success. They are not being set up for success. And then we wonder why our children go off into academia, higher education, and are not persisting, because we're padding, well, I won't say padding, I know, listen, we're inflating GPAs. We are inflating GPAs. Like, I can't stand behind that, so I'm hoping tomorrow, before, like, when are we going to change that 4.0, make that scale reputable? And I also like to know, what other, are there other districts that are practicing this?
So I can answer two things before I turn over to Dr. Paluso to comment, because he has put some thought, and there have been a number of meetings as it relates to both the practice, the vision, and how to implement the change. But I will note that despite the fact, there's not necessarily, while it looks a little unusual, I will go ahead and admit, if, when a student goes to secondary schools, to a college or et cetera, they actually restate the GPA to a more normal, more common scale because they want to get everyone on a level playing field. So even if I walked in with a 5.6 GPA, they're going to look at my core areas and rescale my GPA and evaluate me based upon that. So it's not like the students would kind of be, believe that the student has a higher aptitude, because they're going to truly look at the details.
And that's good to know that that might happen, but when we look at the National Clearinghouse and our students persisting, and we look at the number of students that maybe even go off two-year college like MCC here locally, the data would still show that our students are not persisting in higher education, be it two-year, four-year, or even trade. So even we're touting going into trade school, and that requires a level of math and science, and our students are missing out on those opportunities because of science and math skills. So they are not persisting, and I understand what you're saying, but something's not happening, and it's not happening right. And I want to know what I can do to support it happening in the other direction.
Did you want to hear from Dr. Paluso about his plan for change?
So, thank you for the question, thank you for the opportunity. So yes, immediately would be looking at numerics on report cards versus letter grades that would kind of, if you look at our letter grade scale, right, you know, there's no minuses, there's, you know, information, if you had a B, you know, you could be at a 79.5 versus a B-, or a C+. So there's certain things that we could immediately do, like add numeric grades on report cards. There is a component here of education, like we just heard, you know, schools restate these, right, when a student applies, but we have to educate our parents that you're this child that may have had a 5.23, what does it mean now that has a 3.3, right? So I don't want to do that without taking some proper time to educate what it is. But what you said at the end there was really most important, it's the outcomes of what students are learning, right, that needs to be measured. We're looking at processes and procedures, right, but what are our outcomes that students are demonstrating they know when they leave a classroom? What are they able to do, no one be able to do, that we could stand behind confidently to say they've learned what's necessary to go to the next level, right? And that's where we have to spend some time going a little bit deeper with teaching and learning. But right now, immediately, it's taking a look at numeric grades. We have a plan here to split this team up into two teams, an operation team and an instruction team, and our timelines are pretty aggressive to have things in place by January at the latest of all of these recommendations to do, some of them prior to that, but the last recommendation will be in January of this year.
Okay, thank you so much, because I'm thinking about consistency. When you think about pulling grade or going to the numeric system, because we often say, antiquated system, antiquated system, but we have antiquated practices going on. And some of these things are not really even about the data system, that we're looking at, the practices are not up to par in this district. So I'm kind of wondering, you know, and I appreciate what you're acknowledging, the parents have to be educated on what this looks like, and I'd love to see every school community consistently pulling in parents to show them what needs to happen, but I'm processing right now, so I thank you for that.
If I could just add a piece, I'll just be kind of blunt on this, too. Somebody needs to go to jail on this, to have these kinds of scoring, where our children believe, and our families are believing, that our students are achieving, and we lie to them. And I'm not necessarily saying anybody who may be, you know, employed by the district at this point, but somewhere in the past, there were decisions that were made that were against the academic achievement of our students, for whatever reason. And this is really egregious. Thank you.
Excuse me, Commissioners. Commissioner Lebron has her hand raised on Zoom.
Yeah, I was just going to chime in. Thank you, Ms. Nguyen, for alerting, my hand's been up. So I just want a couple of things. I don't know who's going to go to Joe President Elliott, because I do think that the reality is that this is happening across all of our schools, unfortunately, and that this situation of grading is happening at the elementary level as well. And I know I discussed it earlier with our interim superintendent, and he's aware, and him and our deputy have a plan to address how report cards even happen in the elementary. But I do want to go back to this honors, Regents, non-Regents class, and this skewed scale here that we have, and I'm hoping that families are listening along and understanding that we essentially have inflated these. But I have to point out that in the discovery of these things, and in reading even the audit itself in detail, that honors courses are being taught by the same individuals who are teaching the same course, and that the materials, there's no evidence that the materials that they're using in an honors course is actually very different from the materials used in a regular Regents or non-Regents course. And that's problematic, too, because then we're also gaslighting kids to tell them that they're taking an honors course, but in reality, it's the same course that they would have taken even if it wasn't an honors course, based on the person who's teaching it and the materials that they're using. There was no other evidence. So there's a lot of unfortunate gaslighting, and that's the only word I can use, that families and kids have had around their GPAs, and it's happening across every single high school, and it's happening, including at the EAST EPO, and everybody in this community should be aware of that. And yeah, I think the interim superintendent is aware that the expectation is that this is expedited to be addressed right away. I personally do not like the answer that when they get to a college, it's going to be adjusted, because the reality is that the colleges then have to figure out how to make those adjustments and what that actually looks like. And as Commissioner Simmons said, having worked at MCC, yeah, the kids are going to come in, they're going to take Accuplacer, and they're going to test in TRS courses and remedial courses, and use their financial aid for remedial courses, and hopefully get through and maybe graduate, because they went in there thinking that they were an honors student, and in reality, their GPA was really like a 3.0, a 3.0 in an honors course being a D? That is, that to me, I agree with you, President Elliott, that's criminal and really confusing and should be illegal, it should be an illegal practice for any district to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, when I sat down with the Auditor General a few days ago and we looked over these statistics and the recommended changes, it answered a question for me, one of my students that went to RIT and failed. And we were saying, well, how could she fail? She was an I honors student here at the district, but, you know, looking at the grading, the way it is now, it is very difficult to understand. So my recommendation would be, as you're doing, Dr. Paluso, making those changes as soon as possible. And can we have at some point in time, I know, obviously not tonight, but at some point in time, a schedule when these changes will be completed, because I think it's going to make it very easy for parents to understand, without any soft language, exactly where their kids are. So for example, in K through 6, 7, or 8, if it's going to be in, you know, A through F or whatever, parents understand a D, you know, that their kids are failing, and they might not understand a 4, you know? So that's it. Thank you. So to answer that question, we worked with Auditor General to kind of create a timeline of when these next things are going to happen, so we have an aggressive timeline to address this. I do want to say, you know, these are, a lot of this stuff are around numbers and processes. We have to get into, what does instruction look like in the classroom that shows that our kids know and understand what we ask them to do, right? And I think that's where, you know, our energies need to be, as much, we could adjust these numbers, right? The numbers are going to bring, you know, us back into a common scale, of course, what other districts do, but until we get into, what does it look like in the classroom every single day for an outcome of a course, and what we expect kids to know and be able to do, and I know teaching and learning with Dr. Black is working all on, they're working on those outcomes, that's going to be the lift of this as well, right? You know, that's going to be very important.
I'm glad to hear that. Because I'm thinking, I'd love to, along with that time, I know what the priorities are, like, what are the, when we start this timeline, these are the things we're hitting with first. And to your point, if there's not a concise understanding of the execution of the work and how we're approaching it on the teaching level, we cannot expect the students to understand what their learning outcomes are going to be. They should be able to walk in a class and understand, this is expected of me, this is what I need to do to pass this course, whatever school they're building they walk into, whatever class they enter, there should be some consistency in understanding of what my expectations as a student is. And we have to do that.
So let me just also assert here that, first of all, I'm glad that we're bringing it to the forefront, number one. But number two, let me just speak to our building community and others, that we don't look at our children because they're from poverty, because they're black and brown, and think that they cannot learn. I want you all to have the same high expectations for our children, black and brown children in this district, that you have for your own children. Please do that. So don't think that they can't lame, don't get your emotions involved with this. We've got to have our children educated, by any means necessary, and I'll say this on record as well. So as Dr. Black begins to roll out the teaching and learning initiatives, don't shrink back because you're not going to get the kind of support because you're not going to get the kind of support from me if you, if you're coming up here saying, well, these kids can't do it on us too much. I'm going to tell you, we need to, we just seeing how, you know, we're believing that they are performing, and our stu, and our parents and families are believing that they're performing, and we're seeing that they're not. Don't come with that. We need to have our children learning. And like I said, if you come and try to push back on that, I'm not supporting that. Just know that from, from me. Thank you.
And President, I don't mean to go behind you, because I was, I, I agree with you. We also need to make sure that we set people up to be able to do what they need to do. If we, and that this still goes back to the same folks you're talking to. We need to make sure that we have systems and practices in place that people can execute in front of students. We don't have it.
Can I jump in, too?
Yeah, just a quick, oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Jala. Do you want to go, and then I'll go.
Yeah, just a quick question. You say that you have plans to address this, and I just want to raise the issue that many of the things in this report, and I thank you for the report, are recommendations that were already made in the academic plan. So, I, too, would be very interested in knowing what the implementation timeline looks like and how that aligns with what's in the academic plan, and would like to be informed on a regular basis as to how that's going on. And although it sounds like we might be talking about things that are going on in the classroom, there are many processes and practices and beliefs throughout this district that contribute to many of the recommendations and the findings in this report. It's not just in the classroom, it's throughout this district in terms of people being able to change grades, change scores, access to things they shouldn't have access to, that result in documents that we call transcripts, that people are going to question when children walk out of this district. So, I think it's more global than just what might be happening in the classroom. But for now, I'm just really interested in what the implementation plan will be, the execution, and the timeline, and the evidence of all of that. Thank you.
Understood. I'm sorry, go ahead, Vice President.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead, Dr.
So, I just want to say those, those dates have been, they will be clearly outlined on a monthly basis of what will be accomplished over the next six to seven months.
So, I wanted to also add to what Dr. Jala was saying, because they're just minimize it to make it seem like it's only happening in the classrooms. They can only do what they're also being told to do and move up in practices that move beyond the classroom. The fact that it was allowed, like even changing the grades, if you read the audit, the audit says someone's grades were changed after, like while this audit was happening, the student's not even a student anymore. They were able to go in and access it at the very classroom level, like with no level of clearance, or going to a principal, or a principal going to chief, none of that. It was just open access for them to go in and change a grade. Granted, they, the audit says that there was one person. I also want to point out to the public, once you have access to this full audit, and you should, by law, this is public information, and it should be accessible to you all, that there are timelines in there that the administration responded to. But I think what I would like to see is that those timelines are pulled out of the audit, because if you go through the audit, there is a, there's a date that was established by the administration, every single month that addresses what they're going to address out of all of the findings. But I would like to see that actually as a separate bulleted list versus having to go through the audit itself to pull those dates up, and then potentially having them on the website, as well as just a standing itemized list of all the dates and the timeline with that audit. I think that would make more sense than just expecting the public to go into an audit page by page to look for the dates that we're going to be addressing things, because that's a way to vary information. And then lastly, I just, I have to also say, again, that, yeah, it's not just the classrooms. And so, I just want to say, like, again, this has been going on for God knows how long. I have no idea. I don't think the audit even, the audit only took a snapshot of 2015 to 2017 or 2013, and unless that you can, I know it's in the audit, but it only took a snapshot of time. So, who knows how long and what percentages of students have graduated with really low GPAs? Thirty-four percent graduated with less than 2.0, and that's based on an inflated system. So, again, having more data, clear data, accessible data is going to be important for everybody at all levels, but certainly grading as well. But I would like to see the itemized dates separated from the audit plan itself and put on, onto our website. Thank you.
So, we've actually already done that to get to this point and to bring this, get to this final audit. There is a full table of recommendations with the dates of the individuals responsible. And there's actually a plan that administration has created grouping them. If you recall, Dr. Paluso mentioned there would be two functional teams handling the recommendations. So, there is an actual detailed table that's already in existence. We're consolidating, because I had started it, and I created one version, and then some additional edits came to that version. So, we're consolidating those two documents together. But it will be very easy for you to see. It is a multi-page document really specifying dependencies as it relates from one recommendation to the next, to recognize you may need to do one item before you can fully implement a secondary item. So, that body of work has been done. There's been a considerable amount of work between myself and administration as, just to get through and understand both the scope of work that must be completed and the fidelity necessary to get that done. And I will also state that I cannot, or would not, identify something as completed until I'm able to go back and actually look at a full cycle and prove that the change that's been implemented actually works and functionally works for everyone. So, there are system improvements that are there. There's operating and process improvements. There are some documents they've already started working on, and those things will be addressed here as well. So, as soon as we do a final sign off, because there were edits on both sides as it relates to this table of recommendations with selected dates, we'll have that available, and it'll be readily available for you to also see as the dates come up, where the markers actually hit, and what the status of those things are. So, we're able to do that follow-up work kind of at a level where you can see from month to month between now and January of '23.
Are we all set? Can we keep going? Great. Do you have something, Commissioner?
No, I'd just like to say, thank you for this exposure. This will allow us to get, to do some real work. This will give us access to some real work that we need to be doing instead of this, a lot of stuff, the other stuff that we've been doing. So, thank you for this, for this here report.
Thank you. This is probably a good point to actually recognize my team, who actually really put some time into this. We have Jacqueline Faribault here in the back, being my clicker here. So, she's here, and she's been around for many years. I'm sure you know her. Molly Kirchhoff actually is not here tonight, but she, too, heavily involved in this. And we actually have our new addition, Natalie Petrazuli is also. So, I do, we couldn't do this work without everybody's hands on deck and doing quite a bit of data analysis and work to get this, get to this point. So, thank you. We will move on to recommendation 15, and it's about student grade point averages. So, for the graduated students that we reviewed, we did see GPAs ranging from less than one to 4.5, and that would be then unweighted, so there wouldn't be any added value available for those numbers. But the range was that, that broad. And approximately 34% of our CSD students from the 2015 to 17 cohorts graduated with final GPAs below a C or between .41, that was actually someone's GPA, and a 1.99 on a 4.5 scale. Schools really are focused on the specific requirements of the state, the 22 credits in the various disciplines, and passing the particular regents exams. There's really not a concentrated focus on ensuring a certain level of aptitude, or ensuring that the real, the complete understanding by resulting from kind of the passing the regents exam is basically the threshold we're looking for, and we're just looking for passing. But the challenge becomes, you know, do they really understand the content, and was it really, you know, at what level are we trying to teach? And so, that was one of the struggles we had with this. We really have to start considering, and as I talked to Dr. Black, she's like, no, we're not going that, we're going to have to raise the standard and the expectation. We have to consider minimum GPA requirements for graduates, and at least making sure that we're providing additional support, so students really did learn the material, and it was actually learning versus, yeah, I checked the box, and I'm moving on. So, we need to change our current practice to not only look at those various requirements, but ensure that we're passing and at a higher level, and there's a real understanding there. The next chart actually is showing kind of a distribution. We actually redid this chart and took out school without walls, because they actually don't have GPAs. And the way that they graduate, there are many of the students there, that's not common there. So, we removed them from the numbers. But generally speaking, the distribution of grades or grade point averaged, and these are all graduated students, which is particularly concerning. Now, I put, this slide was in addition to kind of give you an idea of how does someone's graduation, grade point average get so low. And really, the bottom line is, some of these grades, I will unfortunately say, came from a student's record. But it really does show you, when you put an F in, you're averaging in, when you're doing a calculation of average, and you're putting zeros in it, it's really very hard to get anywhere, or to get a good solid number. So, with that, as it relates to potential credit, every time you attempt a class, that's going to increase your denominator, or that potential credit that you're going to get. And so, that is the reason, once you earn a credit, if you complete the course and pass it, you're going to have something to add to your numerator. If you do not, there's zero to add to that numerator, and therefore, that number just goes down, down, down. So, that is the reason, or that is an example of how a student could possibly get a .6 GPA as it relates to, and this is a small subset of a particular student, because obviously, we had many, many data points needing to cover, you know, a full course load, two semesters, and at least four or more years, depending upon the student. So, under our credit and regents requirement testing, we really wanted to make sure that the proper credits were there, that the regents exams, they were passed. We went to eight different, we tested eight schools. We ended up with 88 different students that we graduated, and that was way more data than we really wanted to work with. But it just, we kept having things come up where we would just increase our sample size. We did specifically select some students with a 1.0 or less for testing, because we felt that they were at the highest risk for not graduating, and wanted to make sure that we were compliant as it relates to those. We did heavily use our Power School, Power School system and our counselor dashboard to do this work. Our New York State graduation requirements, there was only one student that we could not prove that the credits were earned. You know, management did work very hard to try to locate the documents to substantiate that. They, they just weren't able. It was a past student. The various individuals involved are no longer with the district. We actually, they went through old emails trying to prove, because there really is a belief that the student, in fact, should have graduated. But we, at this point, are unable to prove that. Ultimately, the buildings and the principals specifically are able, are responsible for signing off and ensuring students are meeting the graduation requirements. Obviously, there are teams that support that work. In addition, the Office of Accountability, I'll do my two-second commercial, because Rob Allman does this manual verification, and he's an absolute meticulous rock star. And we, actually, he does do a validation after the schools to ensure things are in order. But it is one person doing all of this work manually. So, we really want to see sign off at the school level, so we know who reviewed, who signed off. Are we sure we did what we needed to do? Make sure that there is formal sign off, and that we update Power School when there are changes or errors that might be found as we get the kids to graduate. It's such a small window, it's a very difficult body of work at the last time, at the last minute, to make sure whatever students can achieve, their graduation or, and their diplomas are getting it. So, because of the small window, we have to ensure that once we decide someone has just made it or whatever, that the system's properly updated, because that is sometimes a challenge. The other point is, while we are doing a manual verification, both at the school level, and there's some things we do rely on in the system, but there's still a manual verification, we need to rely on more reports to do that work for us, so that we're not manually doing things at this complicated level. The next slide is the exit summary and prior written notice. Now, again, we did look at graduates from 19, 2019 to 2021, and there were some changes that did take place over this period. So, originally, we were unable to see for the sample that we were looking at, the exit summary and prior written notice for a number of students. And those are mandated documents, and it really kind of is that plan for a student with disabilities leaving the district, and then the prior written notice, ensuring that there's an understanding that, that the program's changing for that student, that student's exiting the program. Now, the period, the period that we audited actually was prior to the current administration actually developing a decent process to identify it. So, when we went to speak with them about this concern, luckily, or fortunately, they had identified that concern in time for the June 22 graduates. So, we did some additional testing in June 22. And we did see that the PWN, as well as the exit summaries, did exist for those. However, before we're going to be comfortable closing out, we want to ensure that all people have been trained, and we have proof of the training happening, and we have an entire year cycle to hit your January, June, and August graduates, to ensure everyone has, is, we're doing pre-PWN and exit summaries for everyone. But this work, as it relates to a concern potentially, is, I believe, for the most part remediated outside of formally documenting the process and doing the testing and monitoring that's needed. The next recommendation is about COVID impact and recommendation 19. I'll pause. Are there any other questions at this point before I get to 19? Yes, Commissioner Powell?
On your slide 22, the great GPA calculation, is it standard practice to increase the denominator when someone retakes a course? In this instance, literally, the student is penalized for getting a better grade the second time, because they only get half the credit, even if they, even if, so suppose somebody went from an F or zero to a B. The end result would be the equivalent of a D. And, and I, I don't remember my high school years, but I do remember in college that the denominator, if you took the same course over again, would not include the same course twice. Is it common practice in the high, in the high school experience to count both occurrences in the denominator?
So, a high school transcript would have the, the, all the courses a student took throughout their career, so it would have that on there, right? You know, unless there was a marking period or grade change request that would talk about that particular course, then that would show as in the calculation.
So, by that logic, someone could take the same six courses from their freshman year to the senior year, fail every time, and have their 22 credits, because you get, because of potential credit.
Give it to me.
I'm sorry, the denominator would be, could be 22 if they failed the same course six times in every year for the four, for four years in a row. That's just a hypothetical example. Or let's say they got a D, and therefore got a GPA point out of the deal. You know, they're, they would have gotten 20, 24 credits.
The problem is, they're not earning the credit. So, it won't count towards earned credits. They're available, or they're attempted credits, but they're not earned credits. So, that's not going to work.
Well, but as soon as they get a D, suppose they take the same course every year and get a D every time, that's, that gives them earned credits. In the end, they get 24 credits, but, but they've got, you know, a GPA of one, right?
Correct. They would have a GPA of one in that case.
Yeah, that, that takes me to, to what Commissioner Powell was just breaking down, back to observation 15, which is, and I think it was stated there.
Take the same course, you get like a point two.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, were you?
I'm sorry, this is redoing the math. If they took the same course, again, that example, if they took the same course every time, got a D every time, that's right, if there's no zero in there, it doesn't, it doesn't decrease to a half.
But you're, those are just courses, those aren't graduate, graduation requirements, right? You're, you're getting four courses of ELA, right, you know, or passing the regents, right, or you're three. So, they would have to be, you have those courses that need to be included in that.
Correct. But along that same vein, and when we look at the nuances, students can meet the graduation requirement to observation 15 at the bare minimum. And I like the idea of us trying to focus And I like the idea of us trying to focus on student performance because when we look at graduation readiness and the lack of persistence, we are creating a product that's coming out into our community. And we look at what's happened in our community, that's a direct reflection on some level. So how it's, we're talking about increasing student performance, but that's like, that's an entire culture. So I'm just, you know, I'm just interested to know more about this culture. I guess that's going to come out in the plan and the timeline or what have you. Is that?
Yeah, so when we're talking about breaking up these recommendations and when we look at them holistically, right, we have a committee of practitioners for like the systems and structures, right? And then you have a committee of practitioners that are looking at academic procedures and products, right? You know, there's, there's two levels to this, to this audit that we're going to have to kind of look at and plan through.
Are we ready to keep going? Okay, COVID impact, recommendation 19. So according to the district, students were held harmless during the 2020 COVID pandemic. However, in 1920, no student could receive a grade lower than a D in the third quarter. So in this particular case, if a student failed, they would have been dropped back and the failure would have turned into a D for the semester, for the quarter. So at the end of the year, it was determined that students would receive a pass, a pass with distinction or an incomplete. And so at this point, there are students, or many students for that matter, who still have an incomplete sitting as the year end grade for certain courses. When we looked and we re-looked on that SED site, we did notice that there was an expectation that students would actually meet the standards assessed in the project coursework in order to get the diploma credit. And so the practice of either pass or incomplete and no failure is a little bit different than what appears to be the intent. We had an example, of course, of a student who was failing before the pandemic and since the automatic D happened in the third marking period and then an incomplete in the fourth marking period, that student was able to actually pass the class. It gives rise to the question, the concern of did the student actually learn the content and intended material? And then also concerns us with the fact that there'd be a learning gap associated with that particular student if the pass grade was provided. So we're really looking for a plan. It's something that has come up both in the monitors plan and generally, but we really, in order to close the gap based upon our operating practice, need to ensure that we have to minimize that learning loss associated with the practice we took. So we need to figure out that impact and we have to align some resources to say, for the students who are able to pass classes, that they really didn't learn or master the content to a level to keep going, that is not supportive and we need to make sure that the learnings do take place. We also want to make sure we monitor and verify any incomplete grades and take action. Either they're going to be failing or some sort of mark in the system that's not counting against their GPA if that's the decision of the organization, but to end a year or to end a grade and let it cycle out with incomplete, it's not yet done and that, that is not a very solid practice. So that's a cleanup that has to take place. For cohort tracking testing, we received and reviewed the 17 and 18 cohort tracking documents from the 12 secondary schools and programs and we went to six of them to really get an understanding. We really do appreciate the schools, the principals, as well as their counseling team that they had on, on track to walk through exactly what their practices were and express whatever concerns they might have had in that process. Every school had it. We certainly have guidance and guidance was provided to have a cohort tracking for the school at a high level, but then when we get a little bit, we peel back the onion, there is various levels of complexity, fidelity, student information, tracking methods, definitions, criteria. So it can't easily be consolidated across the district and looked at with a complete lens because everyone did something different. And so that was a bit of a challenge as well as if we really have a student management system, we paid some money for, we could hopefully have some way to do a lot of this tracking in the student management system instead of on separate Google Docs or Excel spreadsheets to ensure this is done. But the good news was everyone was tracking something. So then as it relates to the fidelity of that process, consistently, we really did make an effort to track 12th graders. Not so much with the ninth and 10th graders and the 11th graders were kind of hit or miss. But the problem becomes if we're doing graduation tracking, we should start when the process starts, which would be ninth grade. And I know Dr. Paluso mentioned that they were starting to push and ensure that some of that monitoring starts to take place at the ninth grade level. But if I wait until 12th grade to monitor and I missed grades nine, 10, and 11, then I'm already behind the eighth ball and I'm playing a catch-up game. So that is really not good. The additional point is there isn't a standardized process with parent contacts and formal documentation as it relates to this cohort tracking process. So if I think of many years ago when I started, I think it was actually under Dr. Bohan Vargas and we did work on attendance, one of the recommendations we implemented was attend actions. And that is a system where people can note things that are going on and actions and activities happening with attendance likewise in our system. I'm now recommending that we have some sort of place where we're identifying that communication and parent contact as it relates to someone graduating because it's really not a good time when the whole family's getting ready for the person to graduate and we find out they're not going anywhere and they're not able to graduate. So we really need to be on our game. The next point, of course, is that chiefs are going to need to monitor and recognize and be aware if their schools are only tracking 12th graders and not handling the lower grades. So with cohort tracking, it would be recommendations 21 through 26. We're really looking for the comprehensive monitoring and oversight, making sure that's consistently performed and that there's just a good application where we should be able to look at all schools or get a lens, a big, a district-wide view. Certainly, Dr. Paluso or at chief level, it's easier to see something more comprehensive to ensure that we're doing the tracking we should. It's clear what we're doing to remediate the at-risk or off-track students. And that wasn't always clear because the documentation was inconsistent. And those recommendations are presented there to make sure that there's a template and that there's actual consistent definitions across the district, some clear notes as to what's happening, frequency of when we assess students, parent contact standards. There's always the concern and complaint that parents are not aware and don't feel engaged and informed. And I know as students get a little higher in their career, they don't always communicate when they're having some of these struggles. So engaging parents is always a great idea and ensuring that there's some formal process for that. So we're down to our conclusions as it relates to that. Before I get to that, let me just make sure, are there any additional questions? Are we good? So as we hit a number of conclusions, we would conclude that the rates as based on our testing were materially correct for the years that we tested, that the caveat is the infrastructure and control environment surrounding those rates had some significant opportunities where we really do need to reassess, restructure, reform, any other word we can come up with to improve the operating practices and expectations and standards that we have. We had some things that were in place and most of these practices were in place prior to this administration. It's not something new that was slipped in. It's something that's been going on for many years and just hasn't been caught and corrected. We should evaluate board policies and it has to be determined while they're not required policies from like NISBO or anything like that, the question becomes the board has to determine what things they want to have at a policy level to ensure. For example, maybe it makes sense for the board to have a policy requiring annual certification of that ASAP manual to ensure that administration acknowledges both to our parents and families, here are the standards that we're operating under. That shouldn't, you know, the board doesn't have to rewrite it, but they certainly can direct those types of things. At levels where policies don't make sense, we certainly can allow the superintendent to identify the regulations that need to place as how we govern ourselves. We need to ensure roles and responsibilities are clear so that everyone's not thinking someone else is doing it and it comes to the detriment of our students. We want to make sure the course catalog is current, accurate, complete, as well as the course listing so that our system supports what our course catalog is. We want to correct errors in reporting as well as in our Power School system. And we want to make sure, I mean, generally, when you do a system implementation, even if you think about our PeopleSoft that's getting ready to happen, if there is going to be any data that is imported into a new system, you've got to validate that data and ensure accuracy as those things take place. We want all data entry errors to be minimized. We want reporting to identify when there's anomalies in data being presented and reports to identify when something doesn't quite look right so we can do monitoring and validation. Absent access controls that may not exist for certain fields in the system, then we better put monitoring controls in place. So you have option one or option two. If access controls actually stop someone from doing things that they shouldn't be doing and you don't have an access control, then you better have a report that identifies something has taken place. So the question becomes if you can't stop it, then you better monitor it. Schools definitely need to consistently track the academic performance for all students, especially starting in ninth graders, because if we start that a little more comprehensively early, that'll make things a little bit better. We want to improve our district-wide cohort tracking process, making sure the process is developed with templates, automation, training, effective monitoring, so we have efficiently, consistently see of performance and completeness across the district. The GPA scale definitely needs to be revisited to a more commonly accepted scale or the numeric as Dr. Paluso has suggested, and we really do need to discontinue weighing Regents-level classes. District personnel needs to consistently evaluate student GPAs as part of determining student success and learning. And that needs to be a change in practice, which Dr. Black has already started talking about and is pushing for in the organization. And lastly, the district needs to evaluate the impact COVID has had on students and make sure that we have academic plan, we have additional learning opportunities and training to help. Again, a special thanks to some folks who really, I figured, almost had a level of harassment that supported us on this audit as we kept asking questions. Nathan Diedrich and Keith Kaufman, who are over the PeopleSoft system, where PeopleSoft, Power School system, were absolutely amazing. I actually could not believe that there were days where I thought Nathan would actually ditch me or hide in order to avoid yet another meeting with me, but he was there every time with a smile and did absolutely everything that was asked. So he was an absolute amazing person. Also, Terry Ordin and Rob Allman have also been greatly harassed and we appreciate the fact that they didn't see it as harassment and truly just want to make things better. So we appreciate that. Obviously, I've been working closely with the leadership team. But that would conclude my review. Are there additional questions?
Just one statement. I want to just thank you all, you, your team, for this type of work. This is comprehensive, this was real and real uncomfortable. And that's how change happens, to get real honest, real raw, and real uncomfortable, no matter what it looks like. And so thank you for doing what we, what we're supposed to be doing. And, you know, I would just challenge, I know cohort tracking starts when we talk cohort, we're talking ninth grade and this is relevant to graduation, but I just pray that we all start to look at our students way before graduation and we have to really consider our employees. I'm all about families and students. I am a former student, my son was, you know, my sister, but my sister's also a teacher. And so I'm not even going to play the game with you. When we talk about our educators and how they have been compounded and what's going on across this nation, we definitely want to make sure we set our, our employees up for success and let them, make sure that they know that they are supported, that they are working within a system that is not working against them. So when we talk about our students' progress, we have to be honest about, if I'm a teacher teaching ninth grade and I get a child who is not reading at grade level, how did that system fail that child all the way up to this grade? So what, so what are we doing in between to monitor and make sure we have systems in place because we're not going to catch everything? I definitely implore our educators, definitely to lean in. I don't know why my voice is echoing like this. I feel like I'm screaming. Is, is, it is echoing? But we just, I, I just want to implore us to, to challenge our system and how we're going about these practices, setting everybody up for success.
Commissioner Patterson?
I'm waiting for it to turn the meeting over to me.
I was going to see if there were additional questions before I turned it back to you. Do we have all final questions and comments before Commissioner Patterson takes?
I'll just, I'll just also make a comment that, you know, I'm glad that we are starting this process. This is a real difficult, you know, process. And to know that we have been giving our students grades that were not the correct grades is disheartening, but I'm glad that we are moving in the right direction to correct this. And I look forward to further conversations in the future around this. So I thank Dr. Paluso and the team and I also think the Audit General for this kind of intensive and probably at times tense work that, that you're doing. But, you know, it also speaks to the fact that it is not necessarily our children, but it is other things that are causing our children not to succeed academically. So thank you very much, both Anissa and Dr. Paluso. Thank you.
If you all are set, I will go back to Commissioner Patterson.
So once again, I'd like to thank Anissa Henry Wheeler, the Audit General, for making my job as chairman of the Audit Committee very simple and very easy. So outstanding job, outstanding reporting and everyone else that assisted you, I give kudos to also. Like to forward the 2022 graduation audit for acceptance into the September business meeting. Can I have a motion to force a 2022 graduation audit to the September meeting for board acceptance? Willa, thank you very much for motioning. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
And you got a second by, I think it was by Ms. Simmons, Commissioner Simmons? Okay. Any discussion? Any further discussion? Nope? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Online voting is open.
This completes the.
Online voting.
Online voting?
Yes, it's open.
All right, so we'll continue with the online voting, but this completes the audit section of the meeting. I will turn the meeting back over to Commissioner Simmons.
Okay, I'm going to solicit some, some direction because normally I'm not turning a meeting over, so I'll turn to.
Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Simmons. You're going to close the meeting and then we'll go into the special.
Okay, so I'm going to close the Equity and Student Achievement meeting at this time. I'm sorry, I have, I have a whole script in front of me, never mind. And this, and so are we going into executive session?
No, just turn it over to.
Oh, do the meeting poll too. Please do, complete the meeting poll and then we're going to complete this meeting after you complete the meeting poll. And I'm going to turn the meeting over to.
The meeting's going to be adjourned and then we'll have a special.
Okay, perfect. Let's complete the meeting poll and then we'll adjourn from there. Thank you. And at this time, if we've completed the meeting poll, can I have a motion to close out the Equity and Student Achievement meeting at this time?
Motion. Jack.
Motion by Commissioner Patterson, second by Commissioner Powell. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the Equity and Student Achievement Committee has closed. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go into our special meeting and if I'm going to just take a moment to get there from the ESA Committee meeting. This meeting is to convene to discuss resolutions and the superintendent's search process. And I'm logging in, so somehow I always seem to log out. So there is no speaker. So there is no speakers for this meeting, and so we'll go down to consideration of resolutions. And so I'm going to, if you all, well, let's just go one at a time. I think that would, unless you all don't mind bundling, but we don't have that many tonight and we may be able to adjust to if there are any questions. So I'm going to ask for a motion for Resolution 22, 2022, 2389. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions regarding Resolution 89? Hearing none, all those in favor?
I'm sorry, President Elliott, can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you now. Go ahead, Vice President.
Yeah, so I'm going to have to close this casting thing out because I'm trying to look at the resolution and just ask about this. This is the Rock Urban Teacher Fellowship Partnership. We have not hired those individuals who have in the past.
Yeah. Commissioner Powell, Vice President LeBron, that's not the resolution. We're on Resolution 89?
Yeah, that's participating in a cooperative bidding.
This is Bozies.
Oh, that's so weird. Okay, and my screen is showing up the opposite, sorry.
Okay. Any other questions?
No questions on this one, the next one, yes.
All right. Any other questions or comments relating to Resolution 89? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Is the polling open for that? I think I already said yes, okay. There is a little echoing, so I don't know if I need to speak lower.
Can everyone else come on the line?
Testing, testing, sounds better. Okay. Okay. Can I get a motion for Resolution 90? Moved by Commissioner Powell, seconded by.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Simmons, and this is the one, Vice President, that you have questions on?
Yeah, well, questions and comments, and I have to say, like, if I see this resolution come up again, because we see it every year, it's come up, but we have not seen the outcome of what that looks like for the educators that we're putting into this program to get the second masters to be principals. And in fact, I had an email not so long ago from one of the participants in the past who have participated through this program, who has still yet to be called, even though they are outreaching internally, asking for an opportunity to be a principal. And if we're going to be investing time and energy and money into these pipeline programs, we better be supportive of the outcomes and ensuring that these individuals are hired internally to become, to take the next step in principalship, including assistant principals. I've heard, you know, from HR that perhaps some folks they didn't feel were ready, well, then part of the pathway to make them ready is to put them in a position of assistant principal, because they're going through this training for a reason and we're paying for this. Otherwise, we're paying for people to get the certification and the training to go on to other schools, because that's what's going to happen. It's human nature. People are seeking opportunities, they're going to seek them when they can seek them. But it's really disheartening that we have hired external people to come in and be principals and ignore the people that have put the time and dedication into the Rock Urban Program and not hired with them.
Thank you.
That's all I was going to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President LeBron Wells. Any other? Commissioner Patterson?
Yeah, discussion. Just want to verify, when I read this, I thought it was to pay for a full-time teacher, you know, a person who wanted to move toward that education in that area, and that Nazareth and University of Rochester were allotted $200,000 to make sure that anyone who wanted to move in that direction as far as certification would not have to pay. Could you clarify that for me, Dr. Paluso?
So, yeah, and I think the title on this, like Commissioner LeBron was saying, we had Rock Urban, right, you know, which was for principals. This is a teacher pipeline program in this case. This one that's being forth is for a teacher pipeline.
Right, teacher pipeline, yeah.
Any other questions?
I just want to clarify, though, that Rock Urban was a teacher pipeline program for principals, for teachers to get a second master certification to become principals. And if this is not the correct language and this is not associated with the Rock Urban Program, then we should not be voting on a resolution that does not accurately reflect what we are asking us to vote on. I just want to be clear about that, because otherwise, we're voting on something that already exists, and you're saying that this is not correlated to that program.
This is a, I'm sorry, this is a teacher fellowship program, not a program where current teachers become administrators. These are for certification to work, for teachers to work towards their certification in their area so that we could hire them in those high-concentrated areas, especially special ed, bilingual ed, in those areas. So they're working with, as a fellowship on the University of Rochester to earn their certification and get their certification so that we could hire them as teachers, not administrators.
Can I ask a really quick question as well?
So, I'm sorry, but why does it have, then, the Rock Urban Fellowship Partnership? Like, why is it the same title as the fellowship program that existed for teachers doing the principal's pipeline?
So this is being referred as the New York University Rock Urban Teacher Fellowship, where the other one was the principal pipeline, Rock Urban Principal Pipeline?
It was Rock Urban. It was a Rock Urban. I can pull up the resolutions from the past, and I've had, I presented to that group, Adonia Owens used to oversee it, like, and there's lots of teachers that went through that pipeline program. So all I'm saying is, it should not have the same name. We could be more creative than having the same name where it might be confusing to a fellowship program that already exists as a pipeline program for teachers becoming principals.
Commissioner Simmons?
Thank you. I have a question. In the context of what I'm looking at in front of me, where it's saying it's the fellowship to accelerate the pathway to becoming full-time teacher in the RCSD and so on and so forth, is there a expectation for duration, which the teachers would stay? Like, do you become a teacher and you need to stay a minimum of X amount of years? I may not have gotten to that point in here. What is the expectation?
There is. There's an expectation that they're here or they reimburse the district for the, if they don't complete the certification or complete the time, they would have to reimburse the district.
Okay, and I might have missed it with the echo. How long are they expected to teach in the district after earning?
Two years.
Two years, you said? Okay, thank you.
Although I would like for that to increase to five. So any, no other questions? All those in favor, Resolution 90?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the motion carries unanimously. Six-zero, Commissioner Malloy's not here when I say unanimously. Can I get a motion for Resolution 92?
Oh, you're skipping the line?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Can I get a motion for Resolution 91? Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Motion? Is there a motion? Moved by Commissioner Powell, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Simmons. Any comments or questions or any other discussion around Resolution 91? I just had, there is some pending in parentheses next to a couple of people's names. Can you, Commissioner, Dr. Paluso has one to talk about the pending that's next to a couple of names here on this resolution.
If we could, just, I don't want to misspeak on this one. I want to add that to the question log and I can get that right back to you. I'm not, Chris isn't here today. He was supposed to be here, so I just want to make sure I don't misspeak on this. I have a sense.
He is also.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, Chris, Chris is on. He.
Okay, I'm sorry. Dr. Miller?
It's okay.
I should have punted on a couple of these questions. Dr. Miller?
Good evening, everyone. I'm having difficulty seeing the resolution on my phone. Is it pending location or pending certification?
Pending certification.
Oh, pending certification.
Yeah, so pending certification means either the certification is pending New York State Education Department, or it's pending their completion of their studies, which would be relatively soon.
Okay. Any other questions or comments around Resolution 91?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
I made a few phone calls today. I couldn't locate, determine the definition for a professional educator. What, what is that, the meaning? Appointment to professional educator area? So those are.
Commissioner. Go ahead, sorry.
So, no, that's okay. Those are teachers that have cert, that have teacher certification in the content area. So that's a professional educator, that's what we refer to. Certification. Okay, thank you for clarification.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Is there a motion for Resolution 92?
Motion.
Moved by Commissioner Patterson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Simmons. Any questions or comments around Resolution 92? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we need to wait for the.
The online voting is open, and if I could just ask if commissioners can voice their vote into the mic so we can hear it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So voice vote for those who did not speak into the mic. Is there a resolution, is there a motion for Resolution 93?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Patterson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Powell. Any discussion around Resolution 93? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion for Resolution 94?
Motion.
Moved by Commissioner Simmons, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Patterson. Any questions or comments relating to Resolution 94? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion for Resolution 96?
Someone.
Moved by Commissioner Powell, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Patterson. Any questions or comments relating to Resolution 96? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion for Resolution 95? That was a little out of order there. Motion for Resolution 95?
Motion.
Motion, I'm sorry.
Who made the motion?
I'm.
Yeah, Commissioner Simmons. Can I have yours as a second, Commissioner Powell?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any questions or comments relating to Resolution 95? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Can I get a motion for Resolution 97?
Motion.
Moved by Commissioner Simmons, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Patterson. Any questions or comments related to Resolution 97? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries unanimously. Can I get a motion for Resolution 98?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Patterson, is there a second? Somebody give me a second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Simmons. Any questions or comments related to Resolution 98? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you, commissioners. Can I get a motion for Resolution 99?
Motion.
Moved by Commissioner Patterson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Simmons. Any questions or comments relating to Resolution 99? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion for Resolution 100?
Motion.
I'll give that to Commissioner Simmons. Can I give you a second, Commissioner Patterson?
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions or comments relating to Resolution 100? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion for Resolution 101?
Motion.
Moved by Commissioner Patterson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Simmons. Any questions or comments related to Resolution 101?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
I'm looking at the effective dates, September and August, or August, September. Is there any reason that we have this many resignations in the beginning of the month? I mean, is it a carryover from the summer, or are these people just deciding to resign prior to the beginning of school? And if so, do we know why?
That would be too.
It's a large number.
Commissioner Patterson, in the executive content of the resolution, you have the reason codes for why people have resigned, as self-reported. As we know, there is a teacher shortage across the nation, and so many of our suburban counterparts, part of their strategy has been to recruit from our teachers, and so you may find that they have hired some of our staff, and educators are required to give a 30-day notification when they resign, and so we, we are obligated to ensure our students are supported, so we largely hold them to a 30-day. So it all depends on when they resign and when those dates then go into effect.
Okay, and I know a few months ago, we were asking during the exit interview that we had a question as to, you know, why they were resigning. Have we done that yet?
Yeah, that list is there.
I'm sorry.
The list is there.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments relating to Resolution 101? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion for, can I get a motion for Resolution 102?
Motion.
Moved by Commissioner Simmons, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Patterson. Any questions or comments relating to Resolution 102? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion for Resolution 103?
Someone.
Moved by Commissioner Powell, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Patterson. Any questions or comments related to Resolution 103? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that concludes that portion of the special meeting, and the next item for discussion is the superintendent search. And let me just ask.
President Elliott, President Elliott, can you hear me?
I can.
Before you move on, can I just go very quickly and just give a comment to the Resolution Number 95? I don't know if you also caught that Josh Mack, soon to be Dr. Doc, Josh Mack is on there, and I just want to give him a shout out because I know that he has been advocating for a while to have a different position in the district, and I'm happy to see him on a resolution tonight, and I just have to put that on record.
Appreciate that, Vice President. Thank you very much. Okay. So from the outset, let me just ask, and I did send a text to see if, as we move into the superintendent search, is there any need for us to go into executive session? All right, thank you. I want to start off by asking, what I did know is that Dr. Jallow's dissertation is around superintendent searches, and so what I'd like to have Dr. Jallow to do is just sort of, if she will, give us just some advice, direction, because you're, you're a doctor, you're an expert in it, and, you know, this time we really want to get this done right. And so I would just ask, and this will only be the beginning of your advice for us, but, you know, give us some of direction, advice on what we should be doing as we look for a new superintendent.
So, good evening, everyone, once again, and I was told to keep it 10,000 feet for this evening, so I will try to do that. And so one of the first things that one has to give consideration to is the type of search, more specifically, who will help facilitate the search. And basically, you have three choices at this point, whether you want to do it yourselves as a board, or in New York, many times the Bozies is asked to do it, or you can hire a private firm to do it as well. So you have three choices, a private firm. So you have three choices, a private firm, yourself, or BOCs. You actually are associated with two different BOCs, so you have more than one choice. So that's one of your first decision points, as to if you're going to do a search, who's going to do that search? And depending on your answer to that decision, that will result in a different flow of activities that you will have to embark upon. So I'll start and stop there.
I have one question about that, if you don't mind, President. As far as, so you said there's three choices that we can umbrella under, and would all of those choices include the ability to include the community on some level?
Absolutely.
Okay, because I feel like...
I can only speak for the other two. I can speak for if BOCs does it, I can speak for if a private firm does it. That's pretty standard operating procedure.
Okay.
I can't speak for how you may decide to do it.
Choice three, if we as a board, then, because I believe that it's just so important for community on every level, be it internal employees, our parents, our students, what have you, being part of this at the inception, oftentimes, we have these conversations, and we talk about these tables, and it sounds really good, but then we make decisions and pull people in in the middle of something, so, thank you.
So that would be a part of, one of your decision points is who. The other decision point is how long? When do you want to see a permanent superintendent sit amongst you and start serving this district in that capacity? Because that will also inform your decision-making. And then a third decision you have to make initially is whether or not it will be an open search, or what we call a confidential search. Those are three main beginning decision points that you have to think about. There are many other things, but initially, those are the three important things you have to think about.
Any questions to Dr. Jallow? All right.
Yes. Oh, okay, go ahead. You said, I mentioned something about an open search, and what was it?
Confidential.
Confidential search, so could you explain, because I'm not aware of a confidential search form?
So confidential search, when you get to the point where you have put a posting out that you are looking for a superintendent, the idea is that people who apply understand that their candidacy will be kept confidential, and it's usually a confidential process with input from the public, from staff, from the board, but it's usually kept confidential as to who has applied until you get to the finalists. When you get to the finalists, usually it becomes a public, you know, presentation to the community, that these three or four individuals, or whatever you decide, have applied and have gone through the process and made it to this final point. And you usually give your candidates at that point an opportunity to let their employer, if they are currently working, know that you are about to go public with their names, and give them the opportunity to let whoever they need to let know be notified. In the other case, it's open, you know, everybody who applied, and they've gone through the process, and through every step, it's pretty open. Smaller districts usually do open, generally.
Thank you, Dr. Jallow, I'm trying to keep my mics off in case we have that reverberation. And so, what are the first steps that we believe that we should entertain in terms of developing our process for the superintendent search?
President Elliott, I'm going to jump in, because I have my hand up, and I know you're not going to be able to see it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't even see it. So please do, Vice President, please do that, because I can't see the hand.
I know, it's super tiny.
Yeah.
So, one, I just want to say, the last superintendent search that we actually did undertake was an open process, and it did include the community, and including community forums, and in fact, you can still go on our website and see the interviews that were public, and we had interviews where we did a day for just internal staff, a day for parents, a day for students, and one for community in general, and intentionally that way, because questions that teachers are going to have of a superintendent are going to be fundamentally different than a student first, for example, or a parent that they may have, so. And then, just one in general, where anybody can come regardless of their status and ask questions. So personally, I still would like to see a process that way as well, but I do understand the pros and cons to doing an open process in relation to what Dr. Jallow is mentioning, having a confidential search, and she and I have had some sidebar conversations around this, because there are pros and cons to doing a very public way or a private way, and doing it in a confidential way allows for more candidates to apply comfortably who may not want to notify their community or their board that they're interested or looking until they have an opportunity to share that themselves, or they have a final offer. And we've had this conversation before, and I think part of that was doing what's called a semi-open, semi-closed process, and that's what we did last time, where we allowed candidates to apply, and then allow the search firm to vet based on the values that we set forth and the background that we wanted them to have, and then vet the candidates through the search firm, and it's cleaner that way for all of us, and I just have to say that. And then, after that, the top three finalists were then made public, and I do think that the finalists should still be public, a public process. And I understand...
So can I...
Oh, go ahead, Dr. Jallow.
I was going to address, I think there's an opportunity to do both. If you, if you're super lucky, and you get 50 candidates apply, you don't want 50 candidates in front of your teachers, your students, in front of you for interview, and so forth and so on. You want to have a process that's co-created between you and BOCs, or you and the search firm, to determine, let's use this as a criteria to reduce that number to a manageable number. And once you have that manageable number, you can work together to make sure they come before all different constituents that you'd like them to come before, for a very organized interview process. So you can have that opportunity, and should have that, I would encourage you to have that opportunity as well.
Yeah, Dr. Jallow, I just want to say, though, that's exactly what we did last time, we hired a search firm, we had the search firm hold some public hearings to hear from the community, to help put together some of the things that the community wanted to see from a superintendent, right? What those values were, the educational background, whether they were local, not local. I know there's a survey going around right now from the parents, asking, you know, some of those questions, but that was done before, too. But what we did was, we allowed the search firm to come in and host it, and collect that data and feedback, and then, once we got all that information, we actually presented that back out to the community in a very organized way of like, you know, 86% of the folks have asked for this, 90% asked for this, 30% asked for that, and use that profile, if you will, of an ideal RCSD superintendent, of what this community was looking for, for the search firm to then weed out from all of the candidates, and that's why I say it should be the search firm that leads those conversations and collects the data, but also that they're the ones weeding out all of the candidates that are applying. Because then it gets too personal, and people are like reaching out to individual board members, and it, in my opinion, it taints the process. So, we allowed the search firm last time to go through all the candidates and say, these are the ones that like meet the most important criteria that you have all requested, and that the community has requested, and out of those, we ended up interviewing those, and out of those interviews, that's how we got to our top three, and then the top three became public, and then those top three that became public, we then had public interviews for different stakeholders to come in and interview those candidates, and we streamed them, and we videotaped them, and they're up on our website. And then, we had like one final interview that was closed with board members, because we all got to go with board members and observe these open interviews as well, and hear what the candidates were being asked, and how they were presenting to the public, and we also collected feedback at all of those interviews from different stakeholders about each of the candidates, and we asked them to rate them, give us feedback on their answers, whether they were thorough or not, and if they had an option to select who they would select, and rank file essentially. So, I just say that because like, I personally don't want to undergo a whole entire process that, of reinventing a wheel of a process that I think was actually pretty decent the last time around.
So let me have...
Can I...
Oh, sure, go ahead, Dr. Jallow.
Yeah, I just want to add one thing for your consideration, because we have a tendency, when we go through these processes, to think about all the things that Vice President LeBron just described, you know, getting the candidates, and picking the candidates, and sharing the feedback. But it's kind of like a marriage, you're looking for someone, but someone's looking for you as well, right? So, search firms can traditionally help you with how you describe your district, how you determine what's important for your district. You know, you do a nice profile of your district, so that people out there can make a determination as to whether or not they even want to apply. So, it's also important that you have a really nice promotion, advertising type of campaign presentation, so that one can see, is this a district of 10,000, 200,000? Is it urban, suburban? What's the budget like, so forth and so on? So they have enough information to also make an informed decision to even apply, right? Because you want someone who's been very thoughtful about why they're applying, and why they're applying here. So it's a two-way piece, you're looking for someone, but someone is also looking for the right district, so that they think they can fit and be successful here as well. So, the search firm, or BOCs, I'm assuming, can also help you with that part of the process, so that you understand that it's two-way.
So, I agree with Dr. Jallow, excuse me, I agree with, well, I do agree with Dr. Jallow, but I also agree with what the Vice President indicated, how we managed the process previously, and I thought it worked very well. And so, you know, I also would support that process as well, but I'm interested in opening it up, and I'll open it up with Commissioner Adams to begin with.
So for me, I don't support a confidential process, we have to be honest about who we are. We're leakers. We leak stuff here, and that would turn somebody who applied off immediately. If it was a confidential search, and the next day, people, news reporters are calling, because one of us has leaked, we're the leakers, and we just have to own that. So I would hope that we would try to do an open process, so that we don't be, you know, losing some good candidates. That's my wish.
I think, though, on the other side of that, if we, and I understand completely what you're saying, but on the other side of that, there may be some good candidates who may not consider it if it is an open search, as opposed to at least initially, it being a closed search. Commissioner Simmons?
Yes, I still believe in the open search process, I would prefer that, especially we consider how, understanding who we are, to Commissioner Adams' point, and how we're seen, and understanding the lack of transparency, or the process that it's considered that way. Excuse me, I'm a little tired this evening. The open search makes sense to me, and it builds credibility in the candidate. I don't want to lose an opportunity for someone doing a private search, but I can't go away from the open search, but I'm trying to get my thought, because Dr. Jallow said something, and you were saying about, talking about the search firm, I think that's where I was going. The search firm, was the last process that was open, to Commissioner LeBron's point, was that facilitated by the board specifically, or was there a search firm involved in that?
There was a search firm involved.
That included a search firm as well, okay.
Any other comments or questions regarding this process? Commissioner Patterson?
Yeah, for myself personally, I would like to offer the closed version. Again, we do not want to disclude anyone, and, you know, including Dr. Peluso, to my left. But going forward, I would also like to make these people part of the process, I would like them to be part of the process, because I have trust in them, and have, at least with Dr. Jallow, I built a relationship over the time that she's been here. Linda Simmons is new, but I also, because of some of the wonderful things I've heard about you, I'd love for you to be part of the process, and give us some ideas, and again, I speak sometimes for myself, because I'm new, but I respect individuals with tenure, and, you know, a lot of intelligence comes with age, you know, so I speak of myself there, so. But, again, at least those two individuals, you know, at this point in time, you know, maybe there's other people who work for us that might want to weigh in, but I would not be looking for anyone that would be here to serve their own purposes. You know, it would have to be our children first and foremost. Maybe a parent rep, Rebecca Heatherton comes to mind.
Well, we're talking, let me just sort of interject here, we're talking about process right now, not necessarily who's involved.
Right, so, I'm saying, at some point in time, as being part of the process, we're talking about involve parent reps, or liaisons, and things like that, and so, you know, the community also weighing in, students, you know, the Vice President spoke of being a part of the process, so, again, not knowing the process, and having been here prior to, and they have experienced it, you know, I'm just throwing out some thoughts and ideas of individuals that could really give us good ideas on how to go forward, and how to make this to selection, because we definitely don't want to get it wrong this time, we want a person, whoever that is, be it acting Superintendent Peluso, or whoever, that they're committed, and they want to stay, you know, with this district, you know, for a long period of time, so.
Commissioner, Dr. Jallow?
Yes, so, I'm going to bring you back to your core decision points that need to be made earlier rather than later. One, do you want to do it as a board? Do you want BOCs to do it for you? Or do you want a search firm? Because your answer to that, or your decision around that, kind of informs next steps. For instance, if you're deciding to use a search firm, given the processes, as much as we love them, that we have now, you'd have to do an RFP. And so, that requires creating the RFP, posting the RFP, so, I think, you know, we can talk about whether you want a search committee to represent the board, you can, you know, those are all options that you have down the road, not too far down the road. However, your decision around that first piece is very important because of the time constraints that you have placed upon yourselves.
Thank you. Any other comments?
So...
Commissioner Powell?
So, you know, I've been through a search done every which way it's possible to do, right? Open, closed, semi-open, with a search firm, with the board doing it itself, and honestly, it makes no nevermind to me, it all comes out the same in the end, but, and that same means the board has to be the one that's comfortable with the outcome. But Vice President LeBron has a very valid point when she talks about how doing it ourselves introduces a potential for bias, and that we don't want to even project the image or the possibility of bias.
Right.
And whether it's open or closed, on that question, something in-between, a semi-open is most likely to produce the best results, because there are enough candidates that simply would not apply if it were open from the beginning, they just wouldn't want their names out there. And, but I can live with whatever outcomes the majority of this board presses for.
So let me just also throw out that we need to be, we need to have, develop our mission, vision, values, board goals, I mean, we need to have our candidates to be able to determine based on our vision, our mission, our values, and our board goals, if this is a right fit for them, to Dr. Jallow's point, and so, we're going to have to work on what we want this district to look like, you know, what is this board's vision, and, you know, we're talking about working on the goals, really dwelling into those goals in January, and our values, and... And we're going to have to talk about that and make that a priority in terms of ensuring that we can articulate that to whoever the candidates may be. Commissioner Adams?
So, I know, for a fact, that we've done a search firm, and we've done the board style, but have we ever done the BOCs style? I don't know. I don't know.
Commissioner Powell, can you respond to that? I think you've been on the longer than me. I don't, yeah, I don't recollect the BOCs.
We may have to do an RFP for them, the same as if we were doing consulting.
And even if we had to do an RFP or what have you for BOCs, what would be, Dr. Jallow, to your understanding, the benefit of considering BOCs? Like, what would be the differentiation between using BOCs versus a search firm?
I'm not sure. I would imagine that a search firm would have more resources and a further reach so that it's not just New York State, it's beyond New York State. I would think that a search firm might be able to do a deeper background check on your candidates to see if there's anything you might need to know that might sway you in a different way in terms of making your decision making. I'm not as sure about the resources available by a BOCs superintendent and their staff, because that would be an additional duty that they would have to perform versus a firm that's dedicated to doing nothing but searches.
Right. I wasn't sure if BOCs offered a special niche that I wasn't aware of or what have you, so.
Yeah, it's usually, it's used more commonly with smaller districts, to be honest. Not that that should sway you against it, but traditionally, that's what it's been.
And can I wean it?
Yes.
I'm aware of currently out West, BOCs is performing a search, and they're not happy with, again, that's out West, it isn't in our area, but they're not happy with the search. Some of the board members out there aren't happy with the search that they're performing at this point in time.
Any other questions?
President Elliott, yeah.
Vice President?
Yeah, to answer the question of whether we should be using a search firm or not, I'm in favor of using a search firm, although I have very strong opinions around this whole entire process feeling very scammy across all school districts, especially urban school districts, with search firms and recycling superintendents, if you will. I'll just leave it at that. But even knowing that and having strong feelings around that, I, again, I don't support it being us. And I just want to address Commissioner Adams' leaking comment. Yes, this board be leaking lots of stuff and information, but the last time, when we did the semi-open, semi-closed process, some people actually leaked themselves out. They were like, hey, we applied and we didn't hear anything back. And there were people like upset that certain people that were from this community didn't even get an interview, but they didn't meet the criteria. For example, there was someone who, you know, was never a superintendent in a district, who was a superintendent of one charter school, who like wanted to be the superintendent here and then didn't even get an interview because he didn't meet the criteria that minimally by the community, because there was a community criteria, again, that the search firm gathered data and information. And they were really upset, and they tried to drag this board out in this public, community forum style. But the reality is, being a superintendent of one charter school does not qualify you for being a superintendent of a large urban school district that is complex and has a lot of issues like the RCSD. And so, we have to be honest about, you know, who applies as well, which is why, again, I like that, you know, a search firm would, again, offer some of that buffer to really filter out who's really eligible versus us picking individuals because we know them or we know them from along the way. But some people added themselves, and they are allowed to do that. But I don't think the board last time leaked that many candidates. There were a lot of candidates that applied, in all fairness, and some that started applications and didn't even finish applications. It was a lot going on. But nobody leaked anything in regards to the last superintendent's search, and I will say that in that regard, because the candidates from the very beginning knew that if they made it to the top three, that their names would be exposed because of the public portion of it afterwards.
So.
Can I give you something concrete? Yeah, I'll just give you something concrete first. So, for me, once again, I'll use a search firm, and for me, it's a closed process.
Okay. So, let me just put on the table, are we prepared now to move forward in identifying a search firm?
Well, can I just?
Well, you've got to do an RFP.
You have to do an RFP.
I understand that, but I'm just asking, are we prepared? I know that process, but I'm asking this board, are we willing, are we ready now to begin that process?
Oh, I'm ready. Yeah, for a search firm, if you're counting votes.
Commissioner Adams, you ready for a search firm?
If that's what it comes to, I am ready, excluding one search firm. You know, it's my personal thing.
Say, I'm sorry.
Excluding one search firm.
Okay. All right. Okay.
This won't be on the list, my list.
Okay. Commissioner Simmons?
I'm prepared to enter the RFP process.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Powell. She said yes. And Commissioner Patterson?
As we see in the courtroom, asked and answered, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. So, I think that at this point, unless there's some other conversation that we need to have this evening, I think the search firm is going to help us to frame how we move about, how we, you know, process, you know, our search, you know, and they will help us with that. So, any other conversation before we close tonight? Because I think that we need to. If we're going to.
President Elliott, I'm sorry to interject. I think we might have lost connectivity.
Say that again?
We might have lost connectivity, internet connectivity.
All right.
As for Dr. Jallow.
Yeah, I want to say that congratulations on making that first step, but now, you have to think about what should go in the RFP so you can get the right complement of search firms to even apply, right? And it's not really hard. There are a lot of samples that others have used in the same situation, and that might be a starting point, so you're not starting from scratch. Because you have time, it's not really on your side.
Right. So, she's still off? Okay.
Oh, my goodness.
We'll wait a few minutes and see if not, we'll, you may have to adjourn.
What more is there to talk about right now?
I wanted to make a little announcement about a former, about a former student who's performing at, in the play Tootsie, January 20th through the 25th. Marilyn Patterson and David Grant's son is performing in the. At the Rochester. At the Rochester Auditorium Theater, the 20th through the 25th. Tootsie. All right, so.
The question was, are we planning to go in, are you planning to go in executive session?
I'm not, no. Okay. All right, thank you. So, if everybody, and we don't have Commissioner, Vice President LeBron? Okay. All right. So, I'm going to, we have concluded that we will have a search firm, but since we can't do any other business, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn, and we will take this up at another meeting. Moved by Commissioner Simmons, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everybody. Thank you. Ended that.